Thank you. It's 7:00 PM. It's the City of University Heights City Council Meeting, March 9, 2021. And the meeting is being conducted by Zoom. I call the meeting to order. All five councilor present. First order of business approval of minutes for February 9 and March 2. Are there, they were sent to you. Are there additions or corrections to either minutes? Hearing none. Both minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, public input. I understand there are a few members of the public here. Would anyone like to speak to the council about any subject? Let me know, Mike, if somebody is signaling you.
I haven't seen anybody say anything. And you do have the right to unmute anyone if you, those of you that are muted right now.
Okay. You don't, you didn't get a signal from anyone, right?
No, I did not.
Okay, so we'll move on to Mayor's report. And first of all, we have the annual examination report and John Olson is here tonight. And so is Chris Anderson. And so, John, would you like to start the review?
Oh, I sure would. How was everybody tonight?
We're good. Nice day.
Yes, it is. We had 64 degrees today. I suppose you guys were a lot warmer than us.
Seventy-one.
Boy, I can deal with that. Well, for some reason, I seem to have misplaced my pre-prepared thing I had, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with this. Again, I'd like to remind you that what we did was agreed upon procedures. We did not do a full audit. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I need to turn my own volume up, I think. Okay. What we did was, we were, we did not do an audit. It is significantly, significantly less in scope than an audit. What we did is look at the, focused on the procedures that the city is following compared, as opposed to concentrating on the revenues and expenses. And our procedures that we followed were prescribed to us by the state auditor's office. These are the things that they think should be that the city should be doing. Oops, there we are. I'm having some technical difficulties here. There we go. So we, we work on what the state wants us to do. And if we find any, anything wrong, we are supposed to write down a comment. And as opposed to an audit, we are not afforded the ability to exercise professional judgment. So if in some of our testing, we find something wrong, we have to, we have to make a comment. There are probably some extenuating circumstances to some of the comments, but there again, we, we have a certain amount of things we're supposed to test. They even, they even tell us like how many we test and what, what sequence we're supposed to test. And we just, there's, there's no materiality in it. That said, we've got a, actually this time is a four-page report. And it has on page one, it's got a listing of the city officials. And on page two and three.
John, John, just wanted to clarify something. I've seen two different page one. And this is year FY '20. And Casey Cook was on city council from January FY. What was it?
Nineteen.
Nineteen to twenty.
Yeah, and then, anyway, he was on council during that time and Nick was appointed in February of 2021. And so I want to make sure we have the right council member listed.
Oh. That I was.
And I know there's been some confusion because we're looking at the report and we're thinking Nick Herbold's there. And then I realize it's Casey Cook during the time that, during this time.
Okay. It was Nick also for half of it, actually, or less than half. I mean.
No.
I can.
The 2019, yeah.
I can have them both in there. I can have one listed through a certain date, then I can have another one effective, another date.
February 9 was Nick Herbold.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is it says for the period July 1, 2019, Nick was on the council then until January 1, 2020 is when Casey Cook was on council.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. So January 1, 2020, Casey Cook. And then his, his, he resigned January 1, 2021. I just want to get that clear. I'm sorry.
Casey Cook was gone on the.
January 1, 2021.
Okay.
And Nick Herbold was appointed February 9, 2021.
Okay. And I think we probably looked online to see what, what they were right now. And.
Right.
Yeah, John, John, John did is our Zoom onsite meeting in December. So at that point, Casey was still on council.
Okay. We will get that, we'll get that fixed up.
Thank you, John.
Yep. On page two and three is our independent accountant's report on applying agreed upon procedures. And what it does, it goes through and kind of list out exactly what we did. Like we observed the minutes, we went through your internal control. We observed financial reports, bank reconciliations, all the TIF papers that needed to be done, depository resolutions, looked at all your debt you have, traced some of your receipts to confirm some of your receipts with the state, looked at the budgets, we looked at payroll, we looked at disbursements. And this basically spells out what we, what we did. And on the last page, on page four, is our detailed recommendation. The first one is segregation of duties. And this one is always going to be a concern, considering the size of staff that you have. But you are, you're doing as much as you can to be, to have some duties segregated. Certified budget, there were three functions where the budget was over expended at the end of the year. And that just needs to be watched and make sure that we do those amendments before those go over. Transfers, the transfers were done. But the one step that needed to be done was the fund transfers needed to be approved and documented before, before the actual transfers were done. Financial condition, this is one of those, it was a timing issue because there was a project that got started before the, before the either bond proceeds or grant proceeds were going to come in. So it was just a timing issue. But there again, you, at the end of the, end of your fiscal year, we saw you had a deficit balance. We can't necessarily say, oh, it's because of this. We just, it's a deficit fund balance and we know what there's, we know what the outcome is. And then we had one council meeting minutes that was published outside of the 15 days after the meeting. And this was because Chris was out of the country.
I was in Italy.
And we, we, we understand that things, things happen. But unfortunately, on the ones that we test, if we see something like that, we've, we've got to write it up. So quite honestly, I think University Heights, the staff is doing what they need to do. There's no, all these are very minor non-compliance issues. I personally don't see anything wrong with what's, what they're doing. They're doing a good job. Any questions?
So who's going to monitor some of these resolutions that we need, you know, to correct some of these things? Can we have in the future, the clerk and the, and the treasurer kind of get together and say, I've transferred money or, you know, that would be, I want to try to correct these minor things in the future.
Are you talking the segregation of duties or?
No, you said that, or at least what I read was, we need to have a vote in the minutes before we transfer, or at least it has to be in the minutes.
Voted upon before.
It needs to be voted upon by council before the transfer is actually done.
Right. I want to know if, how we can correct that. I think with the the treasurer knowing this and the clerk, will that correct that in the future? You think that'll help, Lori?
Are you talking about fund transfers like between classes? Or are you talking about transferring money from one account to another?
It's the transfer, transfers from funds.
Okay, so we are already doing that, Louise. I mean, we've just been doing it. I think we did it after this fiscal year ended, but we did it when Steve Cool worked on the annual financial, financial report. So. But it was after this year ended, so.
Right.
Right. So I think we have things in place already to make sure it doesn't happen in the future. It just happened after the end of the fiscal year that John is testing, so.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Any other questions for John? Okay. Have a safe drive home, John.
It's gonna be a short one this time.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thanks, John.
Bye.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're going to go on to Mid-American Energy. Our customer service rep is Wim Murray. And Wim is here tonight. And I'll let Wim go ahead and start and tell us about Mid-American Energy and what you want the city to know. Welcome, Wim.
Thanks. Good evening. Thanks for having me. As Louise mentioned, I work at Mid-American Energy. And we have what used to be called community contacts for every community, but I don't know if many of, any of you remember Donna Ashmore. She would have been your community contact years ago. And when she retired, I took on the position. We changed the name this year to Community Link. So I have to keep reminding myself that's what I am now, the community.
I'm sorry, I didn't call you Community Link. Oh, my goodness. I just was reviewing your email and it did say, I'm the Community Link. Oh, my goodness.
Yes, yes. And that's that.
Thank you.
So as the Community Link, it just means I can be the first go-to person for, for University Heights for anything to do with your gas and electric services. And of course, that can include outages such as during the derecho, but we also have other programs. We have the Trees Please program, which I know University Heights has participated in, where we give out $1,000 grants for communities to plant trees. We have our Green Advantage program, which may, it allows customers to quantify a verified amount of energy, renewable energy delivered to them. And in 2019, that was 61.3%. And in 2020, we expect it to be 83% once it's verified by the IUB. We also have our Cares group, which is our corporate citizenship group. So if you guys ever need volunteers for any event, sponsorship, support, community speakers, you could reach out to me and we can arrange that for you also. And of course, we have our residential and commercial rebate. And if you guys have big projects, I hear you might have one coming up for Melrose Ave. You can contact me. And while I can't answer everything, I can put you in touch with people who can help you on just about anything at Mid-American Energy. So if there's anything specific you guys think I should know about University Heights, please let me know. Now, you're, you're welcome to email me. Louise has my contact information and she can share that with you.
Yeah, you say that very kindly. I, I talked to Wim nearly every day during the derecho. She was so kind to put up with me because, you know, a lot of people, we didn't have power for six or seven days, you know, the city. And Wim, when I got word that somebody had oxygen, she got a crew out there to get that side of the street right away, get power. Wim has helped me with streetlights. She's helped me. I've, ever since she gave me her name, I text her really quickly and often. And Wim also helped with our Trees Please because of COVID. I said, can we push it to 2021? And she said, yes, and helped me go through the process of of deferring it to 2021 since we couldn't get together to plant trees in 2020. She helped with that. She also made me aware of a community grant of $500. And I applied for that and was able to get $400 for, the derecho blew away our farmer's market banner and also to replace some signs. And $100 was also for a project for the police. And she came over to the office and we were all socially distanced, Troy and I and her, and met her for the first time. And she gave us the check and it was deposited. I think that was in February. And that, and I just waited to, for Wim to come to thank her for that. And she said, we can apply, even though we received it, this year, we can still apply for another $500 grant, community grant. And it's given for special events, things like that, that we want to do. And I had asked you about street, streetlights. In case in the future, we wanted to do some great streetlights. And what did you find out about that?
Well, they are still working on the standards for the decorative lights that they will offer. So I'm still working on getting that all together for you. And then I will send you an email letting you know what we can offer and the different ways that can work.
Decoletive street lighting.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, you know, in the future, possibly we can look at that. And so Wim is a great resource for us to let us know what's going on. It's just not about our power going out and calling her. It's projects they have all year long. And I think it's wonderful and we've had a good relationship with her and she's helped with many things when I could just be calling the 1-800 number. But it's been great, Wim.
You've been great to work with.
Well, you're kind. It was a tough time, but it was. To me one time during the derecho, I said, well, we've been out with power for three days. She says, Louise, I don't have power either. Okay, I can.
Unfortunately, the older neighborhoods with lots of trees and overhead lines, yeah, those were out for quite a while. I'm also in one of those.
One of those neighborhoods, yeah. So anyway, does anyone have any questions for Wim? Or I just wanted you to get a background of, of what Mid-American Energy can do. And we can always ask them and they can say, we don't have a program or I don't know, Wim can find, can somehow make it work. I don't know. But okay, no questions for Wim?
Can you say your new job title one more time?
Um, my new job title, it's a Community Link is what I'm called. My job title at Mid-American Energy, I'm actually a business account manager.
No, I knew that. I just.
Yep.
Do we have contact information for you?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to have Louise share that with you.
I'll give it to you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Wim.
Thanks very much for having me.
And hang on a little bit and listen to what's going on with our hotel.
I will do that.
It's very interesting.
Louise, this is Greg. I was just going to let you know that Wim has worked with me quite a bit on the hotel. She's been absolutely, she's been absolutely phenomenal. She was so helpful in so many different aspects. Just, just logistics mostly. She gets questions answered immediately. It's just, she's been great, so.
Well, thanks. Nice to hear from you.
Well, Greg, you're in the dark. Are you on purpose in the dark?
Yeah, I'm on my way to Minneapolis.
Oh, I see.
Driving and watching you guys.
So are you giving the report tonight for the hotel?
No, Jim, Jim's on here. He can do it.
Okay.
Yep, I'm, I'm here. I'm here so I can tell you what's going on.
Oh, thanks.
So I sent some pictures.
Yep, I'm just pulling them up.
So he's pulling those up, okay. So I'll start, I'll start with those and we'll go through the progress there. Okay, so now we're, so we're in the kitchen. This is where I've been working a lot. This is the, the cook station. Now, this is the downstairs restaurant level kitchen. And you can see that this is, this is just the cooking station and it's pretty extensive, a couple fryers and a stove and to the griddle, flat plate, and then the, the big box down at the end is a, some sort of super convection oven steamer. And, and so this is, this is all tested, ready to go. We're, we're just got to get it cleaned up.
First floor kitchen.
That's first floor, yep. Yeah, you can go on to that next one, Mike.
Okay. This is, this is always fun. This is always fun with sharing, trying to move from one to the next. Give me a second.
Okay. So on that, on that kitchen level, that's, we, we finished the epoxy floors a couple weeks ago. And the cool, the coolers are installed. Okay, and then this is, this is another area I've been working on for about the past week. But so this is, this is the actual dishwashing station. What you, right, right there to the right is actually an ice machine. And then the triple sink. And then this is a automatic dishwasher. Big huge garbage disposal. And all that stuff's up and operational. So we're, we're just, just, we're just finishing up odds and ends back in the kitchen area. The, the big area that we need to finish up is the front bar area. And we're kind of, we're waiting for cabinetry and, and custom trim work on that yet. So you can, yeah, you can go to the. Okay, so, so this is, this is one of the upstairs hallways. This is what it looks like when you're on second floor through fifth floor. So the, the, now that looks a little bit gold, that wallpaper is actually black with gold. What, kind of like a gold wiring through it, but and everybody loves this lighting. So, and it's, it's, it's real bright in there. But that's, that's typically what your hallway looks like. And the, and we're all finished all the way down to second floor now to this stage. So you can go into one of the, yeah, the room, or we'll see lobby, okay. So this is, this is what the lobby looks like today. And the wood trim on the one wall is all done. Those, those little gold rectangles are some decorative trim that Marriott wants. And, you know, I like the way it looks. But what you're looking at there is the bar area. We're just waiting for more trim for that. And then the plumbing's already installed and sinks are installed. So as soon as we get that trim, we'll, we'll knock that out and in that's, that's kind of what we're waiting on right now. This is, this is a typical cute queen, queen room. So it's got two queen, two queen beds. And this is about 70% of our hotel will have this type of room in it. And you can see there, the drapes are installed, the TV is hanging on the wall, the, all the furniture is in. We're just, we're kind of waiting to do the linen until we get final punch out and then final cleanup.
And the walls aren't gold. Tell them that.
No, they're not. They're, that, that wall is actually sort of a gray, but it's, it's the balance. All the rooms have a balanced lighting in them, so it makes it look a little bit gold. And then this is up on top floor. We're, we're in the drywall stage up there and putting in the, the heating system. The, the pipes that you're seeing up in the ceiling are going to carry the, the heating and air conditioning system. And then when it's all done, the ceiling will be sprayed black. But you're looking, you're looking at the view out to Children's Hospital and Kinnick Stadium. And it's going to be, it's going to be pretty spectacular up there. We're also working on the kitchen, the kitchen upstairs is, is slightly bigger than the one downstairs. So there's quite a bit of, of work we're doing up there in that kitchen too. So that's, that's where we're at right now. And it's starting to, starting to move along a little faster. Like I say, we're just, we're just waiting for materials on some of this stuff and hopefully we'll, we'll have it all pretty quick. So.
And when do you expect to open now? Greg told me end of, end of April, maybe?
Well, we'll be close. I mean, we're, I'm, that's, that's what we're all shooting for. It's, it's just, I never know if supplies come in. We're, we're getting pool inspection in two weeks. And we're going to be starting up the generator and, and getting the generator inspection and the fire, fire inspection probably in the next two weeks. And then we've got the outside patios. We'll, we'll start working on those now that the weather's a little better and we've got rid of all the snow. We've got five outside fire pits that go in the outside patio. And then we've got some fencing and, and planter boxes. So all of those things, that, that won't take too long, but like I say, we're, we're kind of getting, getting started on the outside now that the weather's changed. So I, I'm not going to stick my, my, my neck out on the date, but it's like I say, we're, we're going, we're going as fast as we can on everything. It's just, some of this stuff just does not come in on time.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
Looking great.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim, and thank Greg too.
All right.
For attending tonight. It's very exciting. Keep us posted.
Okay, I will.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go down to city attorney report, legal report. Steve, I'll let you just speak about your report you sent. I'll let you just speak about your report you sent.
Sure. Well, um, the uh, resolution that I think comes up under my report is twenty one oh eight. Uh, the, a question came up at the last council meeting, uh, whether the council was restricted at all in appointing um, you know, who had appointed to be on the board of directors for the O U P condominium association. I guess I should step back. When, when, when the one university place was developed, uh, there were ser, a series of agreements and um, discussions, negotiations with the developer about certain things. And one of them was that if the city became an owner of, of a, of a unit i- in the development, which obviously it is, City Hall, then uh, then the city could appoint a member uh, of the board of directors of the condominium association. Condominiums, you know, operate by boards of directors and all the unit owners are kind of the shareholders, you might say, the people that own it, but the, but they operate and govern by way of a board of directors. So, so the city council has the power, uh, the authority to appoint someone to be on the board of directors of both the, the north building, uh, board of, uh, board of directors for the north condominium and for the south. And the question was uh, last month whether the council could appoint Chief Kelce. Um, and uh, the answer is yes. The, the council can really appoint anybody that the council wants, so. So uh, resolution twenty one oh eight, uh, based on that question from last month, uh, is, is drafted to appoint Chief Troy Kelce as um, as a, a member of the board of directors of both the south condominium association and the north condominium association.
Hey, Steve, could I ask you a quick question?
You bet.
Um, do you consider me to have a conflict of interest in voting on this resolution as an owner? Or would it just be? I mean, I guess the idea, the question is whether I would potentially be voting
Yeah.
Someone, based on my own interests, you know, as opposed to the city's interests. I, it's kind of like a lot of things in town that the common, you know, there's a common interest that's probably intertwined with my personal interests, but I, I didn't know if you had a position on that.
That's a good question, uh, Nick, and I, I, I think I probably would suggest that you sit this out. Um, I don't know that you have a straight up conflict of interest, uh, but I, I think that might be advisable.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll take the position then that I abstain. I know when we, when I had a conflict, actually in City Hall, I would go sit in the audience, so maybe I will kind of, in a sense, do that if that makes sense while we're, we're debating this.
I suppose that's the same for me as well.
I, I think so.
Okay, fair enough.
So you're planning on abstaining too?
Yeah.
Okay. So this resolution number twenty one oh eight is before you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Louise.
Motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Sarah. Okay, discussion.
Miss Troy, are you okay with this?
Yes, I will do whatever you ask me.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Herbold?
Abstain.
Moore? O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Abstain.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero with two abstentions.
Thank you. Uh, Steve, uh, okay, in your report, did you want to talk about anything else with your report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so in my, in the report, I mentioned the, that um, the Think Bin redevelopment. That process uh, is moving forward and it's gonna, it's gonna start heating up a little bit here. Uh, in, since the time that the, that the council has really had anything uh, you know, formally before it, because the council uh, signaled that it would prefer to move the, the corporate boundary uh, to the east, which places the entire development project in, in Iowa City. Well, then all of the uh, the work in terms of zoning and development approvals or potential approvals, that's all been going on uh, with the city of Iowa City and uh, the university and the development team. Um, they, they can't finalize anything, uh, but that's, but the reason we haven't heard much about it uh, because, because we don't really have much to, to, to do or to say about it. Um, the, so that's gonna change here rather rapidly. First of all, um, for reasons that are unknown to me, I think I told the mayor that I would find out, but I didn't. Um, the, the project is now called the J, the James. J, like, you know, like the Book of James or what, whatever else your reference for James might be. Uh, anyway, so it's called the James. And uh, I'll probably still call it the Think Bin redevelopment, but it's called the James. And uh, it's, it's still uh, configured the way that uh, that it, it has been presented previously. Um, that, you know, as, as, as these developments move through, some things change. Uh, I, 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 there, there was discussion at one point, at least in my notes, that this was gonna be either restricted to like a certain age. I don't think they're gonna restrict it to a certain age, but they're certainly gonna market it to fifty-five and older. They, they always called that active living, which makes me feel either old or, or good. I can't, I don't know which, but uh, active living community, so, so that's the same. Um, there, there were some concepts that showed a, a couple of uh, townhomes, uh, kind of in the front of those uh, those apartment buildings. And those are, th- th- there's not enough room for them, given the site plan that they've worked on with Iowa City, so it's, it's just gonna be those, uh, those buildings. Um, they're still working on, you know, assessment numbers and things like that and um, um, you know, so there's been a lot going on. What's upcoming and at the council's uh, special meeting on March twenty-three, uh, the council will have before it a, a formal application from the University of Iowa, actually the State Board of Regents, uh, as the owner of, of, of that portion of the property in University Heights. There'll be an application to what the law calls sever or cut off, you know. Just sever that part of uh, of University Heights uh, at the request of the owner, the university. And there, there will be a companion uh, uh, application. Uh, there already is a companion application uh, before the city of Iowa City to annex uh, that same property into the city of Iowa City. So, so one thing that will be upcoming is there'll be an, an application to sever uh, the property that will be considered um, by the council on March twenty-three. There will also be um, an application uh, or I'm sorry, a resolution that the council will consider to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement with the city of Iowa City for uh, revenue sharing. Um, yeah, and uh, w- we've had to work through some issues with that, that I'll go into more, um, you know, as that meeting approaches. But there'll be a, there'll be an agreement that will, will, will provide for uh, revenue sharing that you know, uh, given current estimates, uh, it looks like the, i- if there's a sharing equally of fifty-fifty, uh, that there will probably be about eighty, eight zero thousand dollars in, in uh, property tax revenue that would uh, would, would be received by the city on an annual basis. You know, once the project's built and all up and running and, and paying taxes, which is a little ways down the road. Uh, along those lines, the, the hope, the expectation, I guess, of the developer is that approvals will be in place so that construction can begin um, this, this, this spring to summer. Um, so this year with, with the, the, with the expectation and plan that um, you know, the property would be completed and, and uh, fully built out and eh, eh, ready for occupancy in a spring to summer, uh, twenty twenty-two timeframe. So you figure if it's, if it's up and running in twenty twenty-two, then um, then you're, you're, you're probably not gonna see that full, probably not gonna see that full tax revenue until probably twenty-four, twenty-five, although you'll certainly see a significant amount in twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Um, anyway, so uh, th- th- those are some of the details. Uh, there's some, there's some um, discussions going on between the city uh, of University Heights and the University of Iowa to make sure that we have a place set aside on the, the James uh, for a um, a welcome to town sign. Um, uh, some other, other details that I'll, I'll go into uh, as we get closer to the twenty-third, but but that's, that's the, the gist of the update. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has now, uh, and I'm, I'm certainly uh, like I said, there'll be a lot more information to come and we'll, we'll walk you through that um, at our meeting on the twenty-third.
Steve, maybe these are questions or discussions for a, a different day, but when it comes to the, some of the trade area by O U P that the university owns, um, I would hope that there's discussions about how we can make this, that part of the deal and potentially get that transferred to University Heights.
Yeah, so there are discussions underway uh, to, at a minimum, provide for um, you know, some sort of a covenant, uh, commitment, legally enforceable commitment, uh, not to have, uh, have that uh, property uh, ever developed. The, I mean, I'm talking about the property just north of the north O U P building, just so we're on the same page. But there's also discussions about having that transferred. I don't know if, if the ownership transfer is gonna happen uh, quite right now. I have, uh, the university has informed me as recently as this afternoon that uh, they're, they're, they're just going through their fifty, fifty-year planning um, uh, cycle and uh, and, and their plan for that property is to do nothing with it. And so they're, they're very amenable to at a minimum committing not to do anything with the property, uh, and, and then, but the, but yes, there's a discussion about actually conveying the property if, if we can do that.
Any other questions? Or comments? I know. It's a little early, but Steve will be sending a detailed report before March twenty-third. Things are still being hammered out. Some, and it's because the Iowa City City Council, they want to bring it to them April sixth. So I didn't want to have another special meeting, so the plan is to add this to the March twenty-third meeting. Just wanted you to be aware so you know it's not a fifteen-minute meeting. It might be more like an hour. Depends on the discussion. Anything else, Steve, that you needed to report about? I think that's everything.
Yeah, no, that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and go to the city clerk report and uh, Mike, you sent around a report, did you?
I, I don't really have anything to add to that.
Any questions for Mike? And Chris is here. You have questions for Chris?
If I may say something really quick.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Mike for all of his help that he's been giving me as, hopefully at some point my hands will heal and stop hurting and throbbing, so a public thank you to Mike for everything he's been doing. I appreciate it.
And thank you both for your audit work. I don't know if that has already been communicated, probably in the past.
I hope we don't ever have to scan and send an email all the documents that we did. It was definitely a long day.
And, and Lori worked quite a bit on that too.
Right.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, we'll go on to the treasures report and um, uh, Lori submitted a second revision of the warrants. Did everyone able to see that? Lori, were there any other additions to that since you sent it?
Yeah, Mark Phelps from Hawkeye Construction sent the February snow removal bill, which was um,
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. Plus, there were a couple of properties that they had done snow removal at, um, that we'll pay for and then we'll bill the property owners for. So the total um, additional check I'll write to Mark Phelps if it's okay with you all is uh, twenty-six thousand, four fourteen thirteen.
And that's in addition to the warrant you have for fifty-one thousand?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, okay, very good. So we kind of went over our forty thousand dollar uh, snow budget.
We sure did. But hopefully this will be it.
Hopefully we're done, yeah, but I don't know. Okay, so any further questions for Lori about any of those details? Okay, so is um, is there any additions or corrections? Uh, otherwise the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Okay, very good. And Lori will figure out when to sign the paperwork. This week, right?
I want to add Bobby.
The the warrants.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah. I was about to talk about the bank account thing, okay.
Okay, very good. And then are you working for getting Bobby Scott to sign as mayor pro tem? We need to.
That's what, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Right.
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. We'll get that done. Um, but I am vaccinated. The mayor's old and can get vaccinated, so I'll be the one still alive. And uh, so let's see here. Uh, any other questions for Lori with her report? Okay, we'll move to the police report. And uh, Sarah, did you want Troy to go first?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Chief, I see you sent a detailed report.
All right, I'll just touch on a few things very quickly, Mayor. Uh, under staffing issues, you'll note that I'm bringing on two part-timers. I late named those people. That is actually already, we are preparing for football. Again, that does not incur an additional expense uh, for University Heights when we use those. Uh, it's as, as needed only basis and it's to cover staffing shortages, either from officers taking time off or if we farm them out either for university football, or again, I'm anticipating perhaps the Marriott having a need, so I want to increase my, my part-time offer. Uh, skipping down to the derecho, I just wanted to touch on item B with uh, Total Tree Care did do the assessment of the work to be done yet on the switcher track. They identified five trees that presented a danger to trail users. Their proposal for the work was one thousand twenty-five, which seemed reasonable to me for removing five trees. Now that's just dropping it and leaving it to compost in the woodland. Basically FEMA requires a competitive bidding process, but in discussing this with our consultant and with the mayor, our consultant said we have plenty of justification why we can move forward with this. And the mayor and I discussed it and, and we both felt that a thousand dollars and the ability to do the work was very, very reasonable. So again, assuming FEMA is all right with it, we will move forward with that. Uh, skipping down to uh, training, just wanted to point out, all of the trainings I issued, we are actually receiving for free. Uh, they are sponsored by ICAP. And ICAP has identified these as, I mean, not only do they meet some state required trainings, but they also reduce the liability of their insured. And we are taking full advantage of the trainings that ICAP is offering, uh, both because it's free training, but it satisfies state requirements. And some of the training, like the first one that I listed are directly applicable to our ordinance two thirty-five on uh, our, our anti-bias, police-based, anti-bias policing ordinance. So I just wanted to touch on that. And then the last thing I wanted to point out was, uh, the last thing that I listed, item K, consideration for future agenda item, agenda item, or public caring. We had a couple dog bites back in January and while investigating them, uh, one of them is a, is a repeat occurrence, not in University Heights, but the history. Dog has a history of biting and there is some real concern about this dog. There's no doubt that the family loves and cares for the dog. I'm not, I'm gonna present the case here, but I had spoke with the, had spoken with the mayor and with uh, Sarah about putting it on this agenda for this meeting. When they both said that it looked like it would fit and I started to compile a, an information packet for you all, I saw that the posting requirements for this are different than they are for, for most other things and it requires seven-day notice to the dog owners. Therefore, I wasn't able to. Therefore, I wasn't able to set it for this meeting. But by ordinance, which I only quoted part of it or excerpted part of it, I believe there is a legitimate concern, and it goes before council then to determine whether, basically, you want to call this a vicious animal. The ordinance really only speaks to whether you feel the animal needs to be destroyed or not. As we move forward, perhaps, perhaps there are other options. I'm not sure if you determine that it cannot remain in University Heights anymore. But at this point, I'm just giving you a heads up. And I'm asking, and I've had conversation with Louise, and it looks like it will fit on the April agenda. Is that where you wanted to put it, Mayor?
April 13, yes.
Okay, then I will take care of the notice to the actual dog owner. I'm certain that he is going to want to come and speak on behalf of his family and his pet. But I will also put together in advance of that meeting a full information packet so that you all have a chance to review it. And if you have questions, hopefully I'll have an opportunity to answer those even before we get to the council meeting so that the council meeting, that particular hearing can be somewhat streamlined and not rehash everything from the beginning. But give everybody an opportunity to present their perspective and to answer your questions to your satisfaction. So expect that to come out probably at the beginning of the month.
So I believe in looking at the ordinance from your report that we should set a public hearing for April 13th. Is that correct, Steve?
Sorry about that. Yeah, so it is a hearing. And yeah, so you should, you should just set a public hearing for April 13. And you want to say 7 o'clock, that's fine. You want to put a different time down, that's fine. And that can go in the notice.
Okay, is there a motion by council to set a public hearing for the April 13th dog bite?
So a motion?
Okay, motion by Nick? Was there two?
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Lisa. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Okay, it's unanimous, 5-0. Okay, that'll be on the agenda.
Were there any other questions on the report? And if not, that's all I have, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, did you want to add anything?
I'll just comment about the citizens advisory board, that, you know, we still have a vacancy there. So encourage anyone in the community that wants to serve on that board to there's instructions on the website about how to apply. Essentially, you'll email the city clerk. And the website says what information to include, so.
Thank you. We'll go on to engineers report. Doug, you want Josiah to go first?
Yeah, yeah, he's got a large portion of it, so I'll let him go first. So there's no
Okay, Josiah.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have two resolutions here tonight. The first one is consideration of resolution 2109, accepting the Olive Court improvements project. I just, I did want to point, I noticed here in my engineering report, I listed on item one incorrect amount for the final pay-up. The final amount is $23,167.98. The number in there, the 56,000 number, I don't know what that is or where I mistaken that from. But we do have the correct amount listed, obviously, on the pay-up, on the warrants list, and in the resolution. So it was just an error here in this paragraph.
So maybe we ought to consider that. You want to talk about it a little bit?
Yep, so the Olive Court improvements project was finished up essentially last year. And we have now gathered all the final completion materials from the contractor, including their final pay-up, their maintenance bonds, record drawings, and all the final, all the final submittals they need to make. So this resolution would accept that project as complete and then authorize you guys to release the retainage to the contractor in that amount.
Okay, resolution 2109 is before you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Louise.
Motion by Lisa?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mar?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
All right, and then the next one we have is consideration of resolution 2110, accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the Gulfview Avenue Improvements Project. On this one, I sent out a bid tabulation, which I believe was attached here as well, in our recommendation letter. A couple of things I'll note about that, we did receive two bids on March 3rd. The low bid was received from All American Concrete. Their bid was $152,012. I pointed out that that was above our estimate. We talked to the contractors. I guess I should say the other bid from Pillar, which is in the bid tab, was just a shade over 153,000. So both contractors were tightly grouped on their evaluation of the project costs. We did talk with All American, we went through the project somewhat in detail, their bids, any concerns they had. We talked about the schedule and their ability to meet it. And as I noted in my report, they've indicated they have a, they spent quite a bit of time looking at it. They have a good concept of the project, what they need to do. And they felt they could meet the project schedule. So we're comfortable that All American would do a good job. Not, which, in addition, they've worked for the city a number of times in the past years and other cities in Iowa City and North Liberty and Corvillo, and have a good reputation for doing good work. The next part of that is there's a reimbursement amount from Paul Moore. So Paul Moore has addressed the council last year various times on this project, and had committed to funding the project. Now that we have the bids back, we reviewed those in detail with Paul. And specifically, the items that applied to the portions of the work that he asked us to have done in front of 116. And so when we add those together, that comes out to roughly $30,000. And then 10 would be that we would finalize a reimbursement agreement with Paul to be included on the March 23rd agenda. This would be similar to, like for the Olive Court project, we had similar reimbursement agreements with both the city of Iowa City and Jeff Hendrickson for the work on that project. So our recommendation is to award the project tonight. In the past, when we've had projects that are above the estimate, we've considered rebidding the project at a later time, which we have done in the past. But after talking with the contractors, I feel that the bid numbers we got are an accurate estimate of the value of that work. And I don't think that rebidding it is necessarily going to get you lower bids in the future. So our recommendation is to award the project.
Okay, could I get 2110? Could we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Doug, is there a second? Second by Bobby Scott. Okay, discussion.
I think Josiah did a pretty good job. Thank you, Josiah.
Roll call vote, Mike.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbald?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Was there anything else, Josiah, or maybe Doug that you want to?
The only thing I have to add is I'm going to do a walkthrough of the city and kind of see how our winter has, or how our sidewalks and streets have survived the winter. Just looking for any new damage or anything that's really taken a hard hit this year. And then I also have the storm drain placards for the freshwater logos, those green and blue logos. Winter came pretty fast on here last winter, so didn't quite get them in in time to get them on for the snow actually got here. So here in the next few weeks, I'll probably start going out, start putting those on. I think Josiah said we now have them. So I'll be working on that and then kind of keep an eye out for any fresh damage over the winter. I know we've got some potholes and stuff to look at this year. So I imagine that'll be something that Russ will probably be taking care of here shortly. But other than that, that's really all I have, unless you folks have got something else.
Any questions for Doug?
When do we plan on bringing in the sand barrels off the streets and stuff? Are we going to leave them up till April, are we thinking?
Well, did you see some of the snow they have for next week? Like a little mix of rain because the temperatures drop? I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
It is Iowa. But we got, we got the state, the girls' state basketball tournament out of the way, so
Oh, that's true. Oh, yeah.
It's always a curse every year.
Well, we'll leave it up to you, Doug. The council okay with that? You talk it over with Mark and you decide.
Well, it just all depends how fast the grass is getting green. I know, like my neighbors up here in the corner, you know, they like to mow, and they really don't want to barrel out there in the way either to mow around and all that. So yeah, I guess as soon as the grass starts to turn green, we ought to be yanking them out.
Yeah, and then we'll talk to Zach over at Quality Care and see about a cleanup, leaf vacuuming.
Has anybody had any positive or negative comments on Mark Phelps for the snow removal? Looking back for the winter, has anybody got any comments or praises or?
This is Troy, and I included it in my report, actually. He was super responsive every time I dealt with him. I know we did receive some complaints about you obstructions following the initial clearings at some intersections. Whether I was calling to have sidewalks cleared that weren't cleared or whether I was calling them about complaints from motorists. He was always very, very quick to respond. And if he did not resolve the issue that day, he took care of it the following day. So I have nothing but positive things to say about working relationship.
That's pretty much everything I've heard, too. It's been a pretty positive response, and Mark seems pretty responsible. And I'm pretty pleased with the services that we had this year, considering the amount of snow. And, you know, crunch time, and I know he had to pile snow, or he had to pile it. But then he did come back and cut down those blind spots when he could, where he could. So it was very challenging for everybody. But I thought he did quite well. So I want to give him a shout out right now to say thanks, Mark, for your good service that you provided for our city this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to finance. Bobby, did you have anything? You've had a pretty full schedule this month.
I don't know that I have, you know, anything major. I mean, nothing that we, I mean, you know, the Olive Court, yeah, with all of Gulf, or the Gulfview project we just got done talking about was a little more than we thought. But, I mean, it's nothing major. I don't know, Steve, do you have anything in the way of our conversation about the hotel motel, the hotel motel tax that you feel like we need to update anyone on? And Louise, I don't, I don't really have much, honestly.
Oh, yeah, Steve, you are going to ask for, you asked for how we're budgeting that so that we can put it in a resolution for the March 23rd meeting? Do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, that's right. As I think Steve Cool and Bobby sort of described at a recent meeting, the hotel motel tax was approved for specific uses by the electors, by the voters. And so as the council sort of either spends that money, or as the auditor just said, you know, before you spend it, it'd be nice if you passed a resolution saying, this is how we're going to earmark this money. So there'll be a resolution for the February, excuse me, the March 23 meeting that allocates or specifies certain portions of that, of the anticipated hotel motel tax money for certain budgeted items in the FY '22 budget. Okay, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on then with building, zoning, and sanitation. And I see we left your name off, Nick.
That's okay.
We haven't added it yet.
That's okay.
Do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I just, probably just a conversation with Brian Jensen. I got to get caught up to speed with him. We touched on a lot of different issues that, you know, he was seeing or that I'd been hearing about. One of the top issues was the rental cycle, which is currently three years. With, I mean, he just was really impressive to talk to, and I've heard good things about him. He seems to think that he could handle a two-year cycle rather than a three-year cycle. And we just kind of talked about how three years might be a bit long for some of these properties especially. So, you know, I think that would be
For issuing rental permits, you mean?
For inspecting the rental properties.
Got it.
Yeah. So, yeah, rather than waiting three years to inspect again, he'd inspect every two years. So I think that's something that I would plan to follow up with council about in the future. I'm going to talk to him a little bit more about it, but he seemed pretty clear that he could handle it. And he seemed pretty clear that it could, it would be helpful. Like I said, especially for certain properties that after three years, a lot, you know, can happen in them. We also talked, another main issue is that, you know, there's, I think some of the people that I hear from most vocally are talking about concrete in front yards and driveways that, you know, are really large. We have the percentage, obviously, that they can't surpass. But I think there's some that are grandfathered in, some that, I don't want to have ravines. So when you take into account the ravine, you know, it's still under the third or whatever, the 40%, but it still looks like a lot. And then just, I think some people who have just planned to ask for forgiveness rather than permission. So I think the question there is what to do about it. And we talked about maybe low-hyve vegetation buffers or some sort of idea that might be at least ideas for homeowners. I don't know that higher buffers are going to work when you're talking about putting it right by the sidewalk, because then you break, you know, you have visibility issues and people are pulling out of their driveways. But, yeah, that's, I mean, we had a good conversation. I've just been really impressed with his communication and insights so far and plan to follow up with council in the future about some of the ideas that we come up with.
Okay, any questions for Nick? Okay, thank you, Nick. So Lisa, you had the e-government report that you circulated. Did you want to talk about that at all?
Well, not too much, but I would just like to point out for anyone, I have a link to ordinance number 55, which is our pet ordinance that specifies that pet owners and walkers need to clean up after their animals and dispose of the waste bags in your own garbage. And also the Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO webpage, we have a link on our homepage to the long-range transportation plan survey, which is open until, I think it closes on March 12th. So you still have a couple of days if you want to respond to that.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. Are there any announcements? Okay, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting will be adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the weather.